To order. I want to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, we have myself, Amy Freak, Ed Spiker, and our assistant Melissa Premier. And did you get a chance to read over the meeting minutes from last?
I did.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the October 10th meeting.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We had some correspondence from DRA that, we had some paperwork, some documents that were outstanding, and we identified them, and they had been sent. And that's all taken care of. Thank you Paula and Melissa. Sullivan County Treasurers has sent the Select Board their warrant for tax, tax to be collected for RSA 29:11 totaling $312,732 for the upcoming year. And the Health Trust portal, Melissa, I've signed that, and Paul has sent it off to release it. This is a copy of it. I signed your original, so, thank you. Ed, we have a septic. New septic for map lot 18479, Stephen Greenlee.
Easy if I just come over there?
Yeah. What's that?
They're not changing anything very much.
Nope, there's no one else. It's away from the well. Is it, it's just one? No, one signature though? We have another one on Ash, 22 Ash Swamp Brook Road, Christine Martel. Map 1139. Are you familiar with this piece of property?
Ash Swamp?
Yeah.
No.
Find a bridge.
I, I know where it is. I love that road. I can see it. Part of the stream that runs through there.
That's, I was wondering about that. Kind of way.
That doesn't tell me much. Not a lot on there as far as where anything is, is there?
The road. On driveway.
Yeah, there's no road on there. It's just.
Hey, Ed, I had asked them for work for minutes.
Aye.
Didn't really quite cut it. And I tried to blow up for you guys just to see if they were aware of where it lies. It's, Ed, the, the septic designer had said that he was waiting for a stamp from the state, and that was meant to be sent to us now, so, I don't know if that affects us.
I'd like to hold off until I see those plans.
I'm just worried, it's wet out there, so I'm a little worried. Oh, Melissa, I stole your, that's for that one, my bad. Thanks.
Yeah, until I can see a larger, I could mention like.
We have a land use change tax assigned from Lori LaVenture on Boulder Vale. Getting old, Ed.
Hard to read?
Oh, bad.
That's why those plans did me no good.
I don't have an update from Jason on the fire department yet. And I don't have a answer from Callie either regarding the visiting nurses. That's my fault. Ready?
Sure.
Alright, we're going to move on to appointing a new member. First of all, we'd like to thank everyone for their interest in stepping up to fill the position. And I hope that everyone expressed interest will also express interest in March, because we need five. And after careful consideration, Ed and I have decided to appoint Kim Burkhammer. Need to make a motion on that.
Like to make a motion to appoint Kim Burkhammer as the temporary Select Board member to fill the vacancy, and also, I would like to step down as
Should we do that second?
Planning Board. As the current Planning Board member, and allow her to continue her
As ex officio.
As ex officio on the board, and I'll step in as a alternate.
My second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Kim Burkhammer will be at the next meeting. Good to sign this out. Thank you, Ed. Budget Advisory Committee, we had a meeting last Monday, very good meeting, just kind of getting all the information that we need. Jim Morgan, Russ Edwards, and Aaron Keen, all there, I was there. And they're doing all their homework. We're going to run, start running some numbers and try to get information pulled together for everybody. Our next meeting, the next advisory meeting is November 3rd? 2nd? 7th, 7th, yes. Yes. Robert Thorson of Thorson Firearms and Gunsmithing. He came two weeks ago for his gunsmithing business. He is now in good standing with the state and has submitted all of his report. So I would like to make a motion to allow Thorson Firearms and Gunsmithing to operate their business in agreement with a valid firearms license.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No, it's, I've just never seen this. That's the next one. It's for Sue Edwards.
Yeah, that's, that's different than the Thorson one, but the Thorson one signatures as well. I'm sorry, it's. In the second page, I'm sorry.
There it is. Yep. No. We have a pistol permit renewal for Sue Edwards. Pistol, pistol permit?
Not so much required in the state, but it helps for reciprocation in others.
It's only one.
No? Okay. Leave me over here feeling a little bit down.
And then we have an intent to cut. Kathleen Scanlon on Reed's Mills Road.
Stealing papers, okay. Twelve. They come in handy every now and then, you never know.
We need to get Joe a gas, a gas card.
Yeah.
So, I would like to make a motion that the Highway Department has a gas card to charge all their fuel expenses, so Joe doesn't have to do it himself.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Under new business and more new items, Mr. Grisick, who's in the crowd, has done some work regarding the trails, class six roads and the trails in British, and he's reached out, out to his attorney, just clarifying what we can and can't do with the trails. So I think we take some time to read these over, and so the trail impression is the pinnacle trail that goes out to the cemetery. Have you used that trail?
I, I stopped out the visit with him and talked about it, just to check in. I'm unfamiliar with the situation, what's going on, and I'd like to look over what he's come up with before making any decisions, so as long as I can get copies of that within the next couple of weeks, I'm sure we can come up with something.
So, we went up to take care of the cemetery last week. Beautiful, beautiful trail out there. The cemetery's grown in so bad, and the headstones aren't taken, aren't taken care of, and probably shouldn't send a veteran out to take care of cemetery, because we were there, we were kind of, that place looks amazing. I don't want to close off the only access, I know that we're going to close it off to us. But I also want to find out, there's a gate right past the cemetery that goes out, and it ends up coming out by the old Haven Cottage on Turnpike Road that the park used. And they had used that road, Ruger had used that, that road to do some logging, and has claimed it as its own, but I'm hearing that it's a class six road owned by the town, and if it's been shut by a landowner, then I want, I want to get full details of this trail before we make any decisions on it.
I can speak, Ed. Just from my knowledge, living there and working with Troy Simba, who's a forester, and it's my understanding that Ruger, Phil Ruger Jr., actually bought that thing from Charlene that used to be the town clerk, so her dad evidently owned that piece of property, and some years ago sold this, that's private property.
Well, if it's a class six road, I don't know how you sell a, a town road during a private sale.
I don't think it ever was actually a through lane, as far as I understand, but that, that just.
A town can receive ownership of a class six road to a landowner, but I don't know if that's documented or not.
Just one other thing, like you mentioned on there, so every year, I think, the town has to approve the roads that it has, my understanding, so I don't know if that's been done or not, but it's shown. And from my research, that road ended at that cemetery. And it was only a couple of years ago that Troy Simba actually built it, so that was definitely.
Okay, alright. I, I don't want, I'm not saying I want to open up both ends and go through, I just.
Just want to share that information.
Ruger, Ruger liked to take over a lot of stuff, so, I want to make sure it's legal. So yeah, so we'll make copies of this, Melissa?
Better than email, just send it.
Also, since we're talking about that, I, I think I never know how to go about it, but I think some discussion needs to be put into cemetery maintenance. It's rather sad, and if we have money. Yes, and, but like the pinnacle one, there was, there's trees inside that fence this big. We took out the ones we could take out safely, but I have no idea if there are people there. And it's disheartening to me that it has been left that way. And a lot of them are in, are in rumpage, and we went through with the weed whackers, and we weed whacked the whole thing, so we didn't mow, because you mow this, and you don't get the downs, so I went around with my weed whacker, and I would go down, and I'd find a stone, and I'd turn my weed whacker, and I would scalp it out and find, I don't know how many I did myself. But I, we got to do a little bit more respectful things for people of pretty. So I think maybe I'll, I'll talk to the Budget Advisory Committee and see, they're, they're finding out what money is where, just so everybody knows, you know, what we have in what accounts, and if there is maintenance money in that, I would like to find out how we can get some work done.
Subject of that, it was brought up to me recently, that there's a tree that's been down and cut up behind the school. Can we get that hauled away at some point?
Sure. How big is it?
I don't know. I was told that it was fallen, and that Frank Brody had, had it cut up. It's able to be hauled away, he just didn't have the means to do so, if it's on town property. Let's find a way and get it done.
Okay. I think that's all I have. Is that all you have?
Aside from, I guess, a slight update. The electrician was here today to install two new outlets in that back cabinet that will eventually be locked where the town hall streams.
All the equipment.
Set up.
Yep.
And the equipment, so that's going to be back there, and hopefully will be installed within two weeks. I didn't want to, for that, or I had the electrician here, so they would have just been putting the cart for the horse. That's it, that's all I have.
Yeah, it's public, well, it's public now, so.
I would hope so. I, I have, I just want to look over all the information that you gave to us, and then see any other that I can find to either go along with or dispute.
Next, yeah, next one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amy.
Sorry? I make a motion to open public forum.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's Melissa's fault.
Okay. I was just wondering if there was an update on the status of the contract with the American.
Jason is giving us all the information we need, and we're going to sign it. Because we have done all the legwork to find out that nothing is being done illegally, and I'm.
I mean morally, I mean, morally, it feels kind of wrong. I feel like we're all learning ourselves out to a big amount of worms.
We have a, in the contract, we have a indemnification clause. I understand, actually, that's why I've been waiting so, so long, but it is absolutely not, the town voted.
Did we vote for exactly this with discretion?
Yes, because everybody's. Every, but it has been public record.
I feel like this has been very hush, not saying to, negative to you guys, I just think a lot of the townspeople aren't fully aware, and we're saying now that you can just allow a pedophile continually.
Well, it's, but it's not us allowing, it's literally, he has constitutional rights.
I know, but, but, we, I feel like you guys also have the duty to kind of protect the community members, and this is not doing that. And I mean, we're all parents, I feel like we can all help me understand why this is, this is not, this is not. this is not, this is not good, for many, many reasons. I just don't know why we have to put in all this work to protect this person, why can't we just go, obviously?
We don't have anything.
I understand that part, but you guys have a say in adding a clause that makes it so the town, please correct me if I'm wrong, is not liable if he is to offend somebody else again? Is that correct?
That's, that's the, that's the
The clause.
The indemnification clause.
Yes.
That's what that is, we can't as much moral problem as you have with anything anyone does. Unfortunately, you can't necessarily, you can't stop somebody else from applying.
But we can say no to funding that or adding a clause.
Troy, the town voted to pay them, and I, I mean, trust me, I could Sunday yelling both sides of the story.
In regards to this, we had special meetings in regards to supporting our students two years ago, we all aligned together. Why can't this be the same? It seems like such, like this is a very powerful thing, and we are opening ourselves up to a very big can of worms, excuse me.
No, it's, I absolutely we're not in an easy position. We've, we've done it using the laws and not our opinions, and that's what, what we have to do and I, I don't know, I, again, I'm in a, I'm in a hard place.
That's what
If we don't have
It's not worth it.
But, no, 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 why we are having such a battle trying to protect ourselves for one individual, why can't we say, hey, we can do a contract? If maybe we don't, you know, he isn't allowed to touch those homes, he's not allowed to touch somebody, you know, like, he's allowed to do these things right now, and people don't know that a pedophile can come and turn home and touch their child. And no matter, I, I can't justify that at all, and I feel like people should be made more aware. And I feel like we have this conversation with people and people don't know, Adam's around town all the time, and he tells people, and people don't know. It is not as known, I feel like, as it should be, and this is such a harsh decision because once you put that in there, you probably can't take it out in 10 years from now. Where is that going to go? We're going to just have to get them through, you know, that's not something we want, I feel like we're opening ourselves up to a can of worms. So just suggesting maybe, I don't know, I say, you know, I hear you say you're going to sign it, but I hope that there's maybe more thought put into making the town more aware and maybe of collective decision.
I haven't got the contract back yet, so we haven't signed it yet.
Okay.
I just I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I make a motion to close public session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I did, I go in, I said aye.
She probably sounded, she probably sounded like, she probably sounded like me, Bruce.